And can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Whitaker?
Here.
Chair Seifert?
Here. Okay. We had May 16th and June 16th meetings, minutes to go over. Do I hear a motion of approval?
I move that we approve minutes of May 16th and June 6th, 2018.
And the second?
I second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Motion passes. At this time, we'll have a public comment period not to exceed a total of 15 minutes. Each member of the audience may address the commission on any subject within the commission's business. Each member of the audience and each subject is limited to discussion of three minutes or as otherwise directed. Do we have anyone wishing to speak tonight? I don't see anyone coming up, so the first item on the agenda is the consent calendar.
Yes, I will be recusing myself from number one, the Barcella Senior Apartments because I live within, I have a property within 300 feet, and number four, Easton Plaza Apartments because they are a client.
Okay. So would anyone like to make a motion?
I would like to move that we approve items number two, three, and five of the consent calendar.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And now that you are recused, do I hear another motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve items number one and four of the consent calendar.
All in favor?
Aye.
All second.
Oh, yeah, second? It's been a month.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No recusals, is it, do we have to say?
Abstentions.
Abstentions?
Mm-hmm.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, well, that takes us to item number six, Pacific Flips.
I have to recuse myself from item number six.
Okay. Have a nice time on the bench.
Well, I will. Thank you very much.
Lauren, what do you have?
Good evening. My name is Lauren Marcellia. I'm an assistant planner with the City of Santa Maria, and I'll be presenting Pacific Flips Gymnastics at 2320 Thompson Way. So this project is locating into the Thompson Way Industrial Park. The applicant is proposing a...
Can you get your microphone a little closer?
Can you hear me now? It's, is this on? Okay.
I don't think it's working.
It's on.
No.
Maybe you can try the other one.
Now is it working?
No.
Okay.
Well, you can't whisper. I gotta look right at it.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then I'll start from the beginning.
Thank you.
My name is Lauren Marcellia. I'm an assistant planner with the City of Santa Maria, and tonight I'll be presenting Pacific Flips Gymnastics. It's the new gymnastics facility for youth going into 2320 Thompson Way. So the project is located at McCoy Lane and Thompson Way. It's in the Thompson Way Industrial Park. It includes these three parcels, 2320 Thompson Way, 2360 Thompson Way, and 1265 West McCoy Lane. The zoning for this part, or these three parcels is PDM1, which is Plan Development, Light Industrial, and the surrounding uses are also within the M1 Light Industrial Districts. Pacific Flips Gymnastics is proposing to occupy about 9,600 square feet of tenant space. It'll take up suites H through K on a 1.8 acre site. Here's a kind of a layout of the existing tenants at the, this location. So at 2320 and Thompson Way, some other uses include Southern California Closeouts, Fisher Pump, and Pacific Flips will take up these four units here. 2360 Thompson Way includes uses such as Western Exterminators and Solvit. And in 1265 McCoy, there are a couple churches. There's the Crestwood Christian Fellowship and the Crosspoint Church. So here's the floor plan that the applicant is proposing. In the four tenant spaces, they're proposing a mix of preschool classes, recreational classes, space for birthday parties. The maximum ratio of youth, or children to coaches is six to one, and the busiest class will include 20 children. So they'll have an area for, like a floor exercise area, other typical gymnastics features like a tumble track and a trampoline, and there'll also be an office, reception area here, and a staff break room. One thing that the applicant is proposing are some roll-up barrier doors along the rear of the tenant spaces. This is to prevent any conflicts between the buildings at 2320 and 2360 Thompson Way. Because this is a light industrial facility, there are some light industrial activities taking place in the, in the rear of the building, such as some of the businesses moving products with forklifts and other, using other large equipment. So this is an example of what those barriers will look like. It'll provide enough ventilation for the youth in the programs to, to perform their gymnastics, and also it won't block off the exits, which would not hinder fire or building from accessing it for safety reasons. This project went to study session on May 3rd, 2018, where some concerns that were brought up and that were discussed then included the safety element of youth mingling with light industrial uses, which the applicant has addressed by providing, proposing the roll-up barrier doors. And staff have also included a condition in the draft permit requiring that no activities take place in the rear of the building. Any pickup or drop-off takes place in the front of the tenant spaces, and that there will also be a sign-in and sign-out process for any children to be picked up that they're accounted for. Another concern that was raised during the study session was regarding parking. And so the applicant has provided sample schedules for their classes to show that there won't be too much activity during the weekday and during business hours that would conflict with the existing tenants in the industrial park. So those tables are provided in the staff report. And then another concern that was raised was regarding compatibility of a youth gymnastics facility being mixed with a light industrial tenant. And at the study session, we discussed how the YMCA used to be located in those tenant spaces, and so it shows that in the past, as planning commission and staff have believed that there's, that this is a compatible use for this area. Here are just, here's an image of the existing tenant spaces. So it's the applicant's proposing to take up the suite through K, so that's H through K. And here's an image of some of the typical rear activities that take place between 2320 and 2360. So the conditions in the draft permit should mitigate any potential conflict between the children and these other tenants. So that concludes staff's presentation of this project. Staff recommends that the planning commission, by motion, approves conditional use permit U2018-0010.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff? Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question for staff. At which point in the mixed-use, in a mixed-use project, the base zoning has to be the majority of the use, 51% to 49%? When we're looking at projects like this, that we're making the determination that it's compatible, at what point do we consider that there's more than enough of a different use there? Because there's three churches there now, at about 20,000 square feet, plus this brings us almost 30,000 square feet. So I don't know what that percentage is of the entire project. Do we consider that as, in the deciding factor of, okay, this is not really the use that this industrial project was, was considered when it was initially approved?
Ryan Huster, Planning Manager. So those standards in the mixed-use ordinance don't apply here. So what we're really looking at is our findings that we rely on for compatibility, that this use will be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood or other uses. And like you said, a lot of these light industrial areas, due to just market conditions, are being filled with other uses that weren't originally anticipated when they were built. It's very common. And we're looking at them one by one, dependent upon the permit that's required for that use, and making the determination at the time with each one if that particular use will, will be able to operate safely within that, the confines of the environment that it's in. So as we're reviewing it, we're looking at the, it's the traffic, the access, who's next door, and one of the big components with this specific project was the, that the prior use of the YMCA in this location had operated successfully here. So, and this is a very similar use. So that was, that weighed heavily in staff's recommendation. But there's no required percentage that things have to be light industrial. We don't have that in the code to rely on.
Okay. I have one more question.
Go ahead.
The other question I have is, I know it's, in the M1 zone, it's not permitted or a conditional use. This use is permitted in commercial zoning. Is, where the code is silent on, on the use, that's always left up to the planning commission to determine?
Well, this use is an allowed use, and so it complies with our code. I'm looking at Lauren to double-check me on the... Go ahead.
So we refer to the section of the zoning code that, under conditional uses, that states that the planning commission has the discretion to allow uses that seem similar and compatible to what's allowed there.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions for staff?
No.
I just wanted, just, I appreciate the...
Commissioner, wait a minute.
Thank you. I appreciate the, the graphs, the charts about the parking, but, I mean, I guess it's ultimately just up to all of the tenants to work it out, but I'm, the Sunday parking, I don't think is going to be anywhere near sufficient to probably what the actual usage is. So is there a, in their, in their lease agreement or in their relationship with the landlord, is there some, if parking gets out of control, or, I mean, is there any? I mean, the parking that's required based on the square footage, I'm fairly confident that the churches are using significantly more parking than what is required because they're full. I mean, you know, I'm sure they have all-day use. So I'm just curious what the plan moving forward is on that, if the parking becomes a problem.
So we've referred to the reciprocal access agreement between the three parcels, which across the three parcels, there are 244 parking spaces. And so based on the, the samples, weekend schedules that the applicant provided, the staff, it seemed as though it wouldn't conflict with the church's hours. But I'll also defer to the applicant to speak on that more, if they have more commentary for the planning commissioners.
All right. Can we finish with the staff first? Or, and then we'll have the applicant's presentation? Is that fine? Do we have any other questions for staff? No?
No.
Okay. So at this time, let's bring you up, and let's have the applicant's presentation. Please state your name and address for the record.
Am I addressed?
Yeah.
Oh, Kelly Reed. My home address?
How about the business address?
2320 Thompson Way, and I'm, live in Napa. To address the Sunday question, excuse me, we, we only host birthday parties on Sundays, and they're not always every weekend. We allow 10 kids unless they want to pay more for, for extra kids, and most of the guest parents drop off, and so it's a parent and a coach and office assistant for about an hour and a half to two hours, and then they go home, and then another group comes. So where it says 18 people possibly needed or parking, it would be drastically lowered.
Okay.
Unless we had a huge party, but, and Sundays are not very busy for us. We, we offer Sunday birthday parties just in case our Saturdays are booked, so.
Have you been over to the facility on a Sunday to see what the parking is like?
I have not.
When the churches are in operation?
No. That's a good idea, but I haven't been over there because I don't, I don't go to much on Sunday. It's my day off. So, yeah. What else? Anything else?
Do you have anything else to add to the project, other than the parking? Would you like to?
I don't think so. Lauren did a great job explaining what, what we do and why we're coming, and yeah.
Okay.
Why we're hoping to be there, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, we'll close the public hearing. We'll bring it back. Is there any more discussion or questions for staff?
For staff? No.
Or anyone? No? Okay.
Time regarding the project. Well, when we discussed at that study session, and I think, I think it's a good project, we did discuss the church, we looked at the traffic that they would bring, and I believe that's what was said, that it's a pickup-drop-off type of a situation. But I think if a problem arose, they'd be able to work it out because of the agreement, if I remember correctly. That was discussed. My only concern was them using the rear of the building, but that's made a condition, so I'm fine with the project.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, may I speak? I've, I've looked at this product, project actually a couple times, and the other one was a gym also. And we've never had any of the tenants come in and complain or say that they had a problem with the parking. I believe we approved the last one, and the people weren't able to move into it. So I, I don't have any issue with this. We've looked at this a couple of times. I think we've answered all the questions of the commissioners' concerns. I'm excited to see it going. I do go by there. My office isn't far from there, more than 500 feet. But I do drive by there, and I don't think, even on a Sunday, they're, they are heavily used, but you're far enough down, I don't think you're going to have an issue with parking, especially if it's just for 10. So I'm, I'm, I like the project, and I'm excited to see someone move into that space. It's been vacant for a long time, so. With that, would I, would I hear a motion?
I move that we approve the Pacific Flips Gymnastic conditional use permit at 2320 Thompson Way.
Do we have a second? I would second that motion. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstentions?
Motion carries.
The motion carries. Thank you. I didn't, I couldn't hear you, Mr. Lopez. Commissioner, I didn't, I never heard you.
Oh. This is all right.
Okay. I just didn't hear it. So that's why I got a little nervous. Okay.
Congratulations.
Yes. Look forward to seeing you guys over there. It's a great program. Have fun. Thank you. My kids used to. Yes, but I'm kind of, no, no gymnastics for me. If you see me doing gymnastics, 911.
Yes, you're having a seizure.
That's a problem. So at this time, we're going to move to item number seven, and I don't think we have any recusals. Thanks for coming back in. Santa Maria Alliance Plan Development Permit. And do we have a staff presentation?
Yes, I'll also be presenting the Santa Maria Alliance Project at 1519 North Broadway. This is a proposal by the applicant to update the existing gas station at the site. They're rebranding and becoming a Shell station. So the applicant, the main thing that they're adding is a new canopy over the existing eight fuel pumps, and they're also proposing to update the facade of the food mart. So the site is located at the intersection of East Donovan Road and North Broadway. It's in PDC2 Zone, which is Plan Development, General Commercial. The former AJ Spurs is located east of the site, and an Arco Gas Station is located northeast of the site here. The Pepper Tree Chevron Gas Station, which recently went through a remodel, is located north across from East Donovan Road. And the Valley Motel wraps around the south and the west of the property. In total, the site is about .2 acres, and, let's see, here's a site plan of the project. It's a little hard to read. I apologize for that. So here's where they're proposing the 180-square-foot canopy over the, these fuel pumps here. The applicant is also proposing to remove an existing 18-foot-tall non-conforming pole sign along Broadway, as well as this metal sign here. It's a price sign, and this monument sign here, and they're replacing their signage with a new monument sign at the corner of Broadway and Donovan. And I have photos of the existing signs and what they're proposing later on in the slide, or slideshow. There are also four parking spaces at this location, when only two are required based on the square footage of the gas station. And this next slide shows the landscape plan that the applicant is proposing. There's currently no landscaping on-site. Usually, we require 15% landscaping in a commercial zone, which in this case would be 1,658 square feet of landscaping. However, the staff and the applicant have had several conversations on how to fit more landscaping on-site, and due to the compact size of the site and the need to fit the truck, any fuel trucks turning onto the site, we were only able to fit 7% landscaping for a total of 826 square feet of landscaping. So through this Plan Development Permit, the applicant is requesting a landscape reduction. Here's an image of the existing food mart building from facing north, so this is at the corner of Broadway and Donovan. So the applicant is proposing to repaint it, and they provided some, some elevation showing how they plan on doing so. And then here's looking east of the site, so you can see that the fuel pumps are, have no canopy, and this is what the, what the site looks like from driving down Broadway. The applicant provided some updated plan sets. You have a copy of that on the dais, and there are also some copies in the back of the room showing these new, this new painting plan. So they plan on adding a darker brown accent for the building, and then a Pablo tan color for the rest of the building. And they'll also be adding some food mart signs. Through the building permit phase, signs will be removed, or reviewed separately, so this Plan Development Permit won't be approving the signs, but it's just to give you an idea of what the applicant is proposing. Staff did provide, or recommend other architectural enhancements to the site, especially since the Pepper Tree Chevron across the street was just remodeled, and Arco at the other end of the corner also has added some architectural enhancements to fit in with the character, or the neighborhood character. However, the applicant was only interested in painting the site, or the building. So staff included a condition in the draft permit to recommend that the applicant provide, try to incorporate more architectural enhancements during the building permit phase. Here's an image of the building facing north, so this is if you're on Donovan. And the proposed canopy, a fuel canopy, will be about 15 feet tall, and it'll be painted to match the building. The applicant would be interested in adding some, the Shell logo to the canopy, but again, this sign will be approved and reviewed during the building permit phase.
Lauren, can I ask you, is it, is it 15 feet or is it 17 feet? Is it 15 plus 2?
Oh, yes, that's correct.
And, and do you know, how does that compare to the, to the canopies on the other two stations on the...
That's a good question. I can pull that up and compare those.
Okay. I'm just kind of curious.
Here's another view of the canopy. This is the south elevation. And here's a slide showing the existing and proposed signs. So these signs will all be removed. There's the existing monument sign, and here's what the applicant is proposing. So we'll review this during the building permit phase. The applicant will also be removing this metal price sign and this existing non-conforming pole sign. So that concludes staff's presentation on this project. We recommend that the planning commission, by motion, approve Plan Development Permit, PD 2017-0010, with the updated plan set, which consists of nine pages.
Thank you, Lauren. Do we have questions for staff?
I do. With regard to the landscaping variance, is staff comfortable with that? Do you agree that there isn't enough space to, to do the required amount of landscaping?
Yes, we, we tried different configurations. From the first to middle that the applicant provided, and the second one, we were able to add a little bit more landscaping here at the corner of Donovan and Broadway, but that was the most we were able to add. So we believe that the applicant and staff have tried different configurations, and this is the best one based on city, city code.
And then what about the architectural enhancements on the food mart? That certainly seems plausible and possible, it's just not something the applicant is interested in doing. Is that right?
That's correct. So in the staff report, or in the permit condition, we recommended that they maybe add other materials or other paint colors to their palette. And so the applicant is here today and can answer any other questions about plans for adding those.
Okay.
Commissioners? Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the past, Lauren, I've passed by there very, a lot of times, and there's always a food truck that's parked on the north side of the building, or there's car washing on the north side of the building. So that area there, it's not designated as parking. There, there can't be any more landscape in that area, which is right to the north of the four parking lots in the back, where item number three is above the new eliminated food sign where, yeah, right in that area, there's either car washing taking place, or there's food trucks parked there, and they're parked for long. So my question is, was that considered as part of a landscape area?
I might defer to, that, BQ, the applicant would like to speak on that.
Hello?
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, my name is Bicky Ball. Address is 1519 North Broadway, Santa Maria. So, thank you for taking the time to look into that. So we spent a lot of time, like Lauren said, and one of the main things is, like the area where you're pointing out, the car wash used to be there way, way back. There has been no car wash over there for the last, I think, two, two and a half years. Sometimes the food truck does come. But the main issue over there is that because the space is so tight, when the fuel truck comes, that goes, you know, from Broadway, and then it goes to the back of the building, and then it turns around, you know, to park because the tanks are over there. Sometimes he cannot get from that side, depending how big the truck is, then he comes from the back of Donovan, and he goes up from there, or he backs up over there. So that area over there is very tight. But there is a area landscape over there by the sidewalk, and we plan on putting some trees over there. So we spent a lot of time, and like Lauren said, it was much less for, and we went on going back and forth, and this is the maximum we could come up with, with the constraints we have. But I think it's going to look really nice with the trees, and considering that there is just nothing... is just nothing over there right now at all.
Okay. And then I, another question is, the, the trash enclosure is moving from where it's shown on this plan here?
Yeah, there is an issue with the trash enclosure, because it is so tight in the front, and people hit it when they make the turn. So that was the reason we want to get it out of the traffic and into the back.
Right, but, but on the exist, on the other, on the previous plan, Lauren, you're, you're showing the trash enclosure, new trash enclosure on the southwest corner, and then on the landscape plan, it shows it towards the alley. So is it going on the alley, or is it going next to the building?
The next, this is not, uh, this is right.
You see it down there?
Yeah. This is right.
This is the actual layout?
Yeah. And the reason for that is that in the other location, there is a handicap parking right next to it, so we want to make sure that we leave enough room over there. So that's the reason.
And then my, my last question is, uh, the, the sign looks like it falls within that site triangle, that intersection. Is that, has that been looked at?
I'm thinking that the staff said that the sign would be on a separate permit, and that would be addressed at that time. I, I saw the same thing, Commissioner.
Okay.
Yes.
That was all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff or applicant?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. The first is, um, on the discussions, on the front page for the, um, for our materials here, under discussions, um, the first paragraph, first sentence, "App递 proposes blah, blah, blah." At some point it gets to, "Paint the existing food mart facade visible from North Broadway and West Donovan." Is the intent there that they're only going to paint two of the four sides? The North Broadway and West Donovan sides, and that they're not going to repaint the other two sides? Or they can paint the whole building?
Uh, they're painting the whole building.
Okay. Okay, I just want, I just want to make sure that it wasn't, there wasn't something squirrely there. Um, and I had a question about the, about the staff's desire to, to have them remove the striping, the, the yellow and the red. I, I mean, I, I understand under normal circumstances, but, but it seems like that that's Shell's, that's part of their, their branding. I mean, so wouldn't you want that red and yellow to be there, just to draw people in the fact that it's a Shell station?
Uh, that was a recommendation from staff, and so, of course, the, the building paint colors are, could be subject to the planning commission's approval. Uh, so if you refer the, the, how the plans were depicted previously, um, we could discuss that with the applicant and, um, maybe review that during the building permit phase.
We would like to have that color, the stripes, something which stands out, you know? So we kind of reluctantly changed it to the tan color, because that doesn't get the attraction. And I'm here with John, he's the expert in converting a lot of stations into Shell stations, and that's what, uh, you know, our recommendation still is, that, uh, I think it will look good.
For branding purposes. On the flip side, I have to say though, it's a, it's, it's, it's a double-edged sword here, because on the one hand, I agree with you on the branding, but on the other hand, I do agree completely with the staff that, given the prominence of that, of that particular corner, um, and the other buildings that have tried to kind of step up, that you should be putting additional facades, additional architectural elements in, um, you know, and take some cues from staff on, on upgrading the mini mart itself, so.
Sure.
It's a kind of six and one a half, that's another. Anyway, those are my questions and comments, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other commissioners? Do we have questions?
Commissioner White O'Neal? Yeah, I just wanted to confirm, because I'm a little disappointed in the lack of landscaping. I'm thrilled that you're making an effort to spruce up this corner, because it's, it's time, you know, to clean this up. And additional landscaping just certainly is such an enhancement, and so I'm, I'm a little disappointed about the lack of landscaping. And when you remove the monument sign, that's, I don't know what, I don't know which rendering is the best one to look at. The one I'm looking at now is E, um, and the metal sign E, does that not open up some more space for you to put another planter, or?
Yeah, we can do that. We will do that. Yeah, there is some area over there, I don't know exactly how wide it is, but that can be used, you know, to put some additional plants, yes. So we will do that. Thank you.
Great.
Where exactly are we talking? Can you please illustrate that first, Lauren?
If you look at the trash enclosure and go towards the, right there.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah.
So is that not landscaping right now? Aren't those trees?
Uh, the applicant is proposing shrubs there, and I also, um, over here, we kept this area clear because, uh, for access reasons, to access the parking. Um, and if there are, this is going back to Commissioner Lopez's comment about the, the car wash and, uh, food truck activities there, uh, if there are any other prohibited activities taking place here, we could take that to code enforcement. Yeah, the applicant is proposing landscaping along this area here, and this was as much landscaping as they could provide in the parkway along West Donovan Road.
So I'm, where are you suggesting?
Well, so with everything they've added and with the shrubbery, that's still only 7%?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
The landscaping that's in the parkway isn't really part of the project, because that's on the, on the street side. So the actual property might have 5%.
Oh, that's correct. In situation, in situations like this, when the applicant is constricted by their parcel size, we've tried to grant some leniency in counting their parkway landscaping towards their site landscaping.
Are you able, Lauren, to use your pointer to just, I need some help understanding how the fuel trucks go? Because I, I feel like the approach from Donovan and the approach from Broadway through the canopy is sufficient. I'm not getting why there's not, why they, I don't understand the construction.
Yeah, I was gonna ask the same question. Where, where's the truck gonna park to?
Can I have the point, Lauren?
Yeah, it seems like they just come in, go into the canopy and exit. I don't understand what the problem is. Oh, yeah, great, okay.
So, so this is where we are talking about additional?
Please use the microphone, thank you.
Sorry. Does this thing stop working?
So the question is, the truck route is when they're delivering fuel, where the tanks are located, and how the whole procedure works?
It was working. Oh, here we go, here we go. So, okay, so here we are going to add more landscaping over here, but what happens is the fuel truck, you know, it'll come over here.
It doesn't enter that way.
No, it cannot go that way. It cannot, because the pumps are there. So they will come, different people use different routes, depending on how big the truck is, so they will go around here. Sometimes they come from here, sometimes they come, they come from here, and then they'll pull forward, and then they will back up, because there are tanks over here, you know, which have to be filled up. So the truck needs to be closer to that, right? So that's why, and these are two additional parking spaces, you know, right now, which we have. So that is the constraint, you know, over here. So this, this patch over here has been just kind of sitting over there, you know, and it's like an eyesore. What I do is, I get it trimmed though, you know, so that it looks okay, but that's the, on, on the sidewalk. So I think if we can work with the city on that, and that itself, you know, this thing is pretty long, you know? If we can put some good trees over there, that will give it, uh, you know, a really good look. So I understand the requirement for the percentage and all that, but if you drive by the property right now, and then visualize it having all those plants and all that over there, I think it's going to look really pretty.
And then as Commissioner Lopez says, what about some more planters around the actual food mart? Because that would help you with your architectural element, giving a little depth and perspective.
You mean something portable, or, because see, this one over here, here the cars go by over here, right? So we already introduced this thing, so I don't know how that's going to work out. Because what happens is that at times the cars put the gas over here, and they make the turn this way, right? So I see them with the big SUVs and all that, they struggle. They will either hit the trash can over here, or, you know, they have to back up, and then there's a danger of them, you know, hitting the pumps and all that. And this one over here, you know, this area is really tight, and then, you know, this is the access over here, this is the door over here, right? So, I mean, we looked at it, you know, and there was just, uh, nothing additional we could come up with. Even this one over here was added at a later stage, just to add that. But I think this is a good suggestion that, uh, you know, this will add some percentage over here, you know?
Putting in another planter?
Yeah. Where the, where the, where the sign is right now, you know? And it has a, it has certain, I think it's like about, uh, I would say it's about, uh, you know, five, six feet long. You know, it has certain depth to it. So if you put the right plants over here, I think the traffic on both sides, uh, on Broadway will be able to see that.
But Commissioner, I mean, ultimately, I'm sorry, isn't it, isn't the planter we're talking about basically just putting, I mean, it, it's already designated for landscaping, right? So it's not gonna add anything?
I, I think what they're talking is, there's five feet of signage that doesn't show, maybe in that corner, it's not showing landscape, any saying you'll landscape the whole thing? I believe that's what we're talking about.
I can't, it's not clear.
Yeah, and then the other question is, does the, the, the truck itself that, that unloads the gas, is there, is there a single place that it unloads the, the gas into, or is there more than one? I'll, I'll let you know.
First question first. Just kidding, we'll get right back to you, sir.
Okay, dude. I'm sorry, sir?
I, I was asking, is there, is there a single place that the gas trucks are going to be unloading gas into your underground? And where does that?
That is this way. Because there is the 87, 89, and 91, the tanks are right here.
Okay.
So they have to be sort of close to it.
Yeah, so I guess the question I had is, you were saying that sometimes they come one way, and sometimes they come another. Ultimately, they will go the direction that you channel them.
Right.
I mean, if you want to give them a ton of choices, you're doing expensive landscaping.
Yeah, they're different kind of trucks, you know?
What's that?
They're different kind of trucks. One is the longer truck, you know, and one is the little shorter truck. So that's why they have to go the different route. But either way, even if they come this way, you know, around, lately they have not been, they used to, you know, but even if they come this way over here, they have to back up in this area in order to get access to the tanks over here. And this is, uh, over here also, you know, it's a busy, uh, I would say, traffic area. People park over here, people drive through here, you know, on this side, a lot. So because the area is so tight, you know, that becomes an issue, and like I said earlier, if we look at what at is, what is at the property right now, there's nothing. You know, I have put some plants and all that, but because the sprinklers are not there, you know, they don't survive. So going from there to what is shown over here, I think people will like that corner. Everybody will. I like the plants which were selected and all that, so I think it's going to look really pretty.
Lauren, Nada, can I, can I just ask you, I'll just kind of cut to the chase, do you feel like you went through all the different permutations, and you can't squeeze any more landscaping out of this spot?
Yes.
Okey-dokey.
Just to, in Commissioner White O'Neal, um, your comment about that planter area where the monument sign is, that, um, on this landscape plan, it's basically that planter area extended all the way down to the trash enclosure. So they've utilized that space and then extended it as much as they could. Uh, we looked at the code requirements for drive aisles and things, and had them put truck-turning templates on it and show us, and this was as much as we could cram onto that site, uh, giving all of the constraints.
Okay.
Okay.
I do, I have a question for staff. Now, you asked them to incorporate the facade improvements, and they stated that they were not interested in that. Were you specific as to what you were looking for?
Uh, we did suggest other, um, other materials and other, uh, other color palettes, and this was as much as the applicant was interested in doing.
And I guess the question is for the applicant, why are you not interested in the facade improvements, given that they're reducing your landscape? I mean, if we really look at it, we're looking at like Commissioner said, 5% really, which is 50% less than what is required. Why would you be opposed to the facade improvements?
No, I'm not opposed to it. What I said was that we, this building was really bad, as you remember, a few years ago, it was just like a tin can. I spent a lot of money at that time to bring it to this level, and now I'm going to spend a lot of money to do this thing. I'm open to looking at something. I can work with John and see if we can, like Lauren was suggesting, if we can add some other color schemes and all that, which would be acceptable to the city, and which will be acceptable to Shell also, you know, and see, so I'm, I'm open to that. I don't have any issue.
Okay.
Yes.
I have a question. When we're, we're talking about the facade and the changes, this picture here, is this what we're building? This, this page BA2, uh, with the food mart sign, and the brown, and the brown? I mean, is this what's proposed? Is this what he's agreed to?
Yes.
Okay, because it looks like it's all new, to me, around the whole building.
No, that's what we're gonna do, yes.
And it looks like it's stuccoed, Pablo tan, so it looks like you are redoing the whole building.
We are repainting the whole building. The whole building was redone a few years ago, all the inside is all, you know, kind of new, but all the outside will be repainted for that.
So then isn't a facade where the, the top, like where we would have a sign or something, what, are we, are we talking about the same thing?
So, uh, to, to clarify, Commissioner, Chairman Seifert, commissioners, this elevation is to depict the color scheme they're doing. The applicant is currently not proposing to do any other modifications, like restuccoing, adding awnings, adding details, adding material. They are simply proposing to paint the building. They are proposing this tan and darker brown for the paint facade, but, um, as we go back to the existing, uh, elevation of the building, it's basically just this building with another color, as the applicant is proposing currently.
So all the boards, the baths, all, everything you see here will be there?
Correct.
Just painted?
Correct.
And painted brown?
And painted brown, correct.
Thank you. I, I do understand your constraint with the trucks. Um, I, I actually had the fortune of building, constructing a gas station, and the first thing we did was cut out the curbs that we put in and make them bigger. Uh, the trucks came in and they could not get in and out. Uh, with all the best laid plans, we tried like heck, and we did all the flow patterns, and we had everything figured out. First truck came in, ran right over the planter, uh, for three feet, and we said, oh, oh, we've, we've got a little issue here. And, and I do, I am aware of the different trucks. It depends on your load, what, what grade, what they're bringing to you, I mean, that does, they, they do have different trucks. I don't think you're getting doubles, from the sounds of it, but you're getting, uh, single trucks with different lengths of trailer.
What we had was that we had a planter on Broadway, and I put a lot of effort in fixing it, putting the, uh, putting the plants in there, but it lasted only like a month. So even with all this landscaping... So even with all this landscaping, I really do not know how the truck drivers are going to.
Why did it only last a month? They drove over it?
Because the truck drivers, you know, when they stopped it, when they were trying to angle the truck, you know, to, to position the truck so that they can access to the different tanks, they would go over the planter.
Can you do anything with Shell? It's a different supplier now. Can you request a certain size truck? Or is that, do they require you to, they, they just ship you what they think is available? Or can you say, I can't have anything bigger than a 40-foot truck? How does that work?
I can talk to them about the truck, but what happens is the driver changes every time. Whosoever is available, that person comes.
You're dealing with Shell now, and these are professional drivers, they're union drivers, and, and these guys, they know their business. I, I believe they're going to be.
No, I agree. What happens is that, you know, when a new driver comes, he does not know from which way to access. You know, and that creates a problem. Sometimes they just stand over there, sometimes they, you know, go park across the street and then they will see which way is the best approach and all that. And that's all that with zero landscaping. Now we are going to have all of this landscaping and the same truck is going to come. So I am a little bit concerned, you know, how that will be, but it's a city requirement. So I'm trying to do as much as we can to, you know.
And that's appreciated. It's, it's well needed and, and it's going to be a great upgrade for the area. We're just getting down to the, the fine details. Thank you for your, your willingness to do this. It's, it's a corner that needs it. But we, we do have some issues as far as exactly what you're going to do there. It's not that anyone's against the project, well, that I know of. But there's a few tweaks here that I think. This is not a great-looking building. And I'm not sure if the paint is going to be sufficient to make it a great-looking building. I think with the canopy, the canopy is probably going to be hiding a lot of the building. And, and I, you know, we went to a lot of trouble with the Cracker Barrel to maintain their corporate look. And I was quite surprised when we took off the Shell stuff. Shell is very visible. I, I know when I'm going to a Shell station. So I'm, I'm kind of torn on that one too. It's a brand, it's a, and I don't find it that unattractive, but. So I'm a little torn on the, on the color of the, of the canopy also. I, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
One more thing, if I may. I think if we go back to the Shell colors, it will give a little bit more, you know, make the building look a little bit better, you know, as we are talking about, you know, to upgrade the look of the building. I think just going to the Shell colors will, that's, but it's your call.
Might help. Thank you very much for your time. I'm going to bring it back down to Commission. And any discussion, motion, or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make one, one comment, and I don't, I don't know how the rest of the Commission feels. I, I was hoping we can maybe put a condition that you can put the hoses that are long enough to fuel from either side, just because of the compact nature of the, of the site, where you don't have to worry about what side your tank's on, the hose reaches across the vehicle.
The truck driver brings the hose?
No, no, the, the hoses, the fuel, the pump hoses.
I see, okay.
I don't know how the rest of the Commission feels, just because you go to Costco and you can fuel from either side. I mean, they have the long enough hoses that, or even the one at Foodsco. That would be my comment.
Thank you. Commissioners?
My comment is, I'm still not 100% convinced about the space issue because I agree with Chairman Dickerson, that truck drivers will drive where they can. But, but I appreciate your experience in it and that. So given that we're going to do this pretty significant landscape reduction, then I feel we need to stick pretty firmly to the need to improve the look of the building, especially given that just six months ago, we required the station across the street to do a pretty significant upgrade too. So I think we need to be consistent with that. I think probably some very simple fixes. I don't know what Lauren has recommended, but a stucco over the current building. I'm not opposed to the brighter, more Shell-oriented colors. I think that can be done in a tasteful, appropriate way. But I do think that some enhancements to the building itself need to be a requirement. But otherwise, I'm thrilled. I, I love to see this part of town getting some facelift. I, I'm happy to see that you're rebranding and going to such great lengths to improve the corner. It's going to be a great project.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I think that the landscaping comes second to safety. I understand drivers are dropping off at different times, different people. And so I think that what the planners looked at is efficient. But I do think that because of that, we do need to include the condition of improving the proposed design per condition 1A in the draft permit. And I believe that keeping the Shell brand is important so that people know they're going to a Shell station. And so I think that I would like for you to keep that brand since it is important.
Mr. Dickerson?
I, I agree with Commissioner Hernandez. I also defer to, to Chair Seifert on his knowledge base on, on the turning radiuses of these trucks, and so I, I get it. And, you know, would I like to see more landscaping? Yeah, I always like to see more landscaping. But in this particular case, with the size of the, the lot and what we're dealing with, I, I think that we have to kind of suck up and live with it on this time. Once again, reiterating though what Commissioner Hernandez said, I think the trade-off there is, and I can't even say it's much of a trade-off. I, I probably would have still preferred to see the improvements to that building made. Once again, it's, it's a prime intersection for us. Other developers have, have stepped up to make their buildings nicer. And I just think that you need to step up to make this building nicer because it's really not terribly nice as it is. And then also, I will say once again that I think that the branding, the Shell branding, you're, you're paying for that branding and Shell's moving in, and I think they should, in this particular case, they should be able to, to have their striping, that sort of thing. So, so the colors, once again, for, for the Shell branding, I think should, should be had. But I do think that per, per number 1A, new siding, rock, or other decorative materials and different trim and wall colors, I think that that's very reasonable to work with staff to, to get that type of trim and that, that rock element or other things to, to make that a nice-looking building. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there any other comments? I, I too, I'm, I'm with Commissioner Hernandez. I think it's a wonderful project. Very excited to see you doing it. Understand your constraints on the, on the driving. I, I would like to see a little bit more on the building. I don't know if it has to be stuccoed, but it, something has to happen. And I would like to see you work with staff on that and, and get that up to just a, a little bit nicer than it's going to be. I do believe that when you put the canopy, and I, I'm with these Commissioners as far as the colors, the striping, I believe that you're paying Shell, you, you should be Shell. And if you're brown, you're going to be, like you are right now, no one's going to know that you even have Shell gas. So I'm, I'm fine with the canopy being the striping color and the, and the branding. But I, and I, and I do appreciate you, I, I'm guessing that you're going to have to be running water lines to these landscape areas and it's going to be costly. I understand there is, you said there's no water to them now. You're going to have to be doing some irrigation underground and patching. It's going to get expensive. But I, I would like to see you just do something, work with staff on that building. And, and thank you pretty much. What do you have to say?
Hi, I'm John. I'm the contractor that does the sign and image work for Bickie. On this building, you want some new elements to it. Would you be opposed to a fascia at the top where you see that board on board? Well, now it's, yeah, where the board on board is there now and the eyebrow there, would you be opposed to a branding fascia similar to the color on the canopy?
I wouldn't.
And then the reason I, I think we're hesitant to do anything to the building is this building is quite old and appearance and structurally. So if you start adding weight to this existing building, you're going to be changing the steel structure inside to support the weight that you're going to add to this building. So maybe if we put the branding fascia and the sign where that existing board on board is and then maybe use a textured, it's called Tex coat paint, that looks like stucco.
Can we get rid of the board and bat?
And we'd get rid of the, the board and bat would be covered.
Well, there's, there's baths downstairs too.
I, I can't see.
They're there.
Yeah, they're there.
Okay. Well, yeah, we, we can get rid of that or spruce that part of it up too. But if we start adding, she said stucco, I don't think this building's going to support stucco or brick or anything like that. But there are things we can do.
Well, I think we're telling you, try to do that.
Okay. Shell's colors also are not that tan and brown. The building would be the branding fascia up above and then the building base would be white with a gray border at the bottom. Is that okay?
Yeah. Look, I think what, what we're saying is work with staff. I think staff understands that it, stucco may be too heavy for this building. There are issues. I don't know when this building was built, probably the 50s, I don't know. We're, we're just saying, make it look nice, work with staff. They're going to be reasonable. We're asking you to be reasonable and that, you know, you want a nice-looking product. I know you do because you want to be proud of it. Shell also is, requires certain things in their buildings. So that's why I think the Commission is saying we want Shell standard, right? And so we're just asking you to work with them. We're not saying we want, we're not getting specific as to what we're requiring. And I think that's where your knowledge will come in and working with staff and their knowledge.
Okay, well, I just wanted to get some ideas of what you would allow and not allow, so.
Yes.
We've got something to work with now, I believe.
And I just want to kind of double down on what Commissioner Hernandez said. I, you know, I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's appropriate to start negotiating the exact thises and thatses. I would much rather see you work with staff on that. You know, we've, we've indicated that we would like to see, you know, some sort of facade, some sort of depth to the building, something a little bit nicer. And at this point, I, staff understands what we mean by that and I think you'll be able to work with them. They're, they're certainly not going to be unreasonable and say, no, you have to put a certain type in that's going to crush your building. I, I don't see them doing that. So they'll work with you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Excuse me, Chair Seifert and Commissioner White O'Neal, Commissioners. Did you want to modify one of these conditions based on the direction from the Commission?
I have, I have some ideas that I can put into the record if the Commission so chooses.
Okay.
And I wanted to make sure we, we take public comment on this item too. We heard from the applicant, but I just wanted to check. Did we open it up to public comment?
No.
Okay.
We're not there yet. We had the, yes, we're, we're not quite there. We kind of had the applicant when we were supposed to be having the staff. We jumped around a little bit.
So we're done. I think we've answered a lot of questions and the applicant has started to answer questions. We can hear public comment and then provide our recommendations for the conditions with your motion.
So, okay, so my miscue there. So written communications, we don't have any. We've had, do we have any public comment on this particular project? Seeing none, would you like to make a closing statement? Or are you good? Yes, sir. You need to be at the microphone, I'm sorry.
I just want to thank you, everybody. It's been a long time coming. And I especially want to thank Lauren. She has been very, very helpful. And we will continue to work with her and incorporate the recommendations, you know, you have given us. And we want to put this one to bed and have John work on the construction. And hopefully in the next few months, you know, that corner stands to look really good. And then I would love to invite you guys to the inauguration, hopefully grand opening, I should say. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, at this time, we're going to close the public hearing. And we'd like to hear from staff.
Sure, Ryan Hostetter. So we have a condition already as a part of your package 1A that we think provides flexibility to work with the applicant to choose materials that will work for their building. And we can add a B. We have an A on there, so we can add a B if we wanted to be specific. The canopy and the building cornice shall use the Shell corporate colors as shown in the February 24th, 2018 plans. So that was in one of the original plan sets, so we can rely on that and just put that as a B, a 1B on here. And then I wasn't sure if the Commission wanted to do something with the, the hose lengths. I, I don't know what that length is.
Brian, can I just say, what do we need to modify, number three then? And say, because it says the building and exterior canopy shall be painted gray, blah, blah, blah.
Yes.
So we'll have to modify that as well if we're putting a B in.
Let's strike the first sentence from three.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, that works.
And then the only other thing was whether or not you wanted something to do with the hose lengths to be able to fill from either side of the car.
My only comment about that is that we didn't make that a condition for the other recent gas station modification. I don't know why we would do that now. I don't know.
If I could, I just think that because it's such a restricted site, you're going to have people waiting to go on whatever side their tank's on. And it's such a small site that maneuvering is going to be a problem where you can't, if you can just pull in and fuel from either side, you're, you're going to be better off than maneuvering on that small site. That was the only reason I brought that up.
Thank you, Commissioner. Can we, can we make it just a recommendation? That they have the ability to fuel from either side of the, of the island?
Sure, we can work with them on that.
Thank you.
I, I'll make a motion that we approve, let's see, Plan Development Permit PD 2017 0010 for Santa Maria Alliance Gas Station with the modifications to the condition of approval including 1B regarding the canopy and building cornice using the Shell corporate color scheme and striking the first sentence in number three.
I hear a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, sir. You're good to go. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. At this time, we're going to move to number eight, and I believe Commissioner White O'Neal is going to recuse herself.
I am. Let's see. I've got a podcast I'll listen to.
Is that our last? You know, Commissioner, that, that is our last item tonight, unless you have some, do we have anything pressing that you're going to be telling us? Just saying.
I'll get caught up tomorrow.
There you go.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a good evening.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. So at this time, we would like the staff to present item number eight, Vandenberg Senior Residences.
Good evening. I'll be presenting the Vandenberg Senior Residences project at 1314 South Broadway. This project is located at the intersection of South Broadway and East Plaza Drive. It's also bound by East Ole Road on the north side of the project site. This is a remodel of the existing Vandenberg Senior Residences. The site is 4.9 acres and it's in a planned development central business district. There is a shopping center with JCPenney located west from South Broadway in this area. And a shopping center with In Shape Gym and Viartes is located south in this, the shopping center here. And those are both in a PDC 1 district as well. The north of the projects is America's Tire, which is in a PDC 2, the planned development general commercial district. So here's the site plan that the applicant is proposing. They're proposing 53 additional senior housing units along East Plaza Drive along with new common areas and a new manager unit. There are also a total of 219 parking spaces at this location. This is the landscape plan that the applicant has provided. Their 15% of the site should be landscaped. Their 15% of the site should be landscaped per the municipal code, and the applicant is proposing 40,000, well, 20% of their site to be landscaped. There was an error in the staff report, which reported that there would be new trees added along Stoll. The, there won't be any trees added there, but the South Broadway frontage will replace the existing landscaping with seven new street trees behind the sidewalk and new shrubbery and ground cover along, and existing street trees along Plaza Drive. The existing street trees on Plaza Drive will be replaced. Here's an example of what the applicant is proposing. This is the, the, there won't be any remodeling done to the, the building facade along Broadway besides repainting it to make sure that the addition matches the existing site. So the, there are a total of 123, or existing units are 123, and they're proposing 52 for a total of 175 units. So the applicant is proposing to enhance this facade to match what they're proposing along Plaza Drive. So the staff and the applicant worked very closely together to add a color scheme that would be cohesive with the existing site and also include simple lines and a more contemporary and modern look to the, the building. This is the proposed remodel to the site. They're proposing alternating recessed planes with balconies to add some more definition to the, the building. This is an example of what the interior court elevation will look like. It'll, so the architecture will wrap around the entire building. The applicant has also provided some renderings of how the site will look with the landscaping. So here's a rendering of South, South Broadway looking east towards the building.
Excuse me, Lauren, are those colors different?
Um.
There's green in there and no red. So, so the east, the, the east.
Are you referring to this color?
Yes. This site, this is completely different than the, than what we're proposing for the addition. We've got the red and the, and the grays. Click back.
That should be, sorry, I have a color palette later on in the show. I can pull that up.
Okay, thank you.
To provide some clarification on that. Here's what the, the material and color board that the applicant provided. So the existing color is the sand color, and they're proposing to add these other complementary colors, so the dark gray, a variety of grays, and a terracotta. And the metal elements will be this gunmetal gray. So the building exterior will be stucco with a light sand texture. Here's some images of the existing site looking north. So this is if you're on Stoll, and Broadway is along this side here. And here's looking west from Broadway and south along Plaza Drive. Staff recommends that the planning commission, by motion, approve Plan Development Permit PD 2017-0002. Oh, sorry, there's also, the applicant provided a letter of support from the Housing Authority of the County of Santa Barbara, which was included with your packets.
Okay. Is the applicant here, and would they like to do a presentation? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hey, good evening. My name is Barry Williams. It's 1103 Ella Street, San Luis Obispo.
Thank you.
And good evening, Chair Seaver and members of the planning commission. With me also is my, is my client and the owner, Jeff Herman. I want to thank Lauren for the presentation that she's given on the project. I think the important thing about this project is to keep in mind that it has been a conversion from the, prior to this, it has been a conversion from the old Vandenbergian Hotel into the residences that it is now, and that what we are doing is actually, I don't know, Lauren, do you have like sheet, do you have the whole package on your computer? Do you have like sheet number two? Or if you have in your packet, sheet number two? Actually, sheet number one would be good to look at first. I'm looking at this kind of the existing site plan, that I could just go through a couple of things. Yeah, that's, that's proposed, but that's okay. We can kind of start with that. I think one of the things to realize on this, and you can kind of see it, is that we're actually, we're taking down a use, and if I can, like in this area, let's see if this thing will work here. In this area, right in, right in here, oh, does that need anything? Doesn't work on that? Okay, well, shot that idea. Okay, no problem. Anyway, there's existing uses, and in your packet, it's actually on sheet one, that kind of shows the, what used to be a cafe and a restaurant and a commercial kitchen, the bar area, stuff like that, has not been used for a long time.
I've been there.
You've been there?
Yes, sir.
I might have seen you there years ago. And so what we're doing is retaining this one-story building, one-port story portion that ties to the third. We're taking that down. And the actual footprint that we're adding is only actually literally 1% more as far as a footprint goes. But we are going up in square footage because of the three stories. In that area, right now, the only thing that's really being used is a social room, a game room, and a library, which we're now incorporating into the new design, into the various levels of the new design as well. And again, that's kind of, I think, in your packet there. This, you know, the project site is kind of like a campus, if you will. It's got, you know, the three buildings. So there's got two, two different singles, or two-story housing units that are existing that have been converted, as well as the three-story on Broadway. And so in our initial proposal, you know, we're showing the three-story building added onto Plaza Street and trying to really work to tie that in with amassing and everything else of the existing building, focuses onto Broadway there, and keeping kind of within that same footprint as much as possible. And I think, you know, from the very beginning of our submittal, I think that the overall amassing and all that's worked. And so what it has been is how do we take, though, with that addition and kind of move that into the front building and tie those together? And if we could go back, I think, to the elevation that you had of the Broadway elevation, if we can. That one. The center tower there and the porco share, about six years ago, my client did some remodeling as far as in regard to the commercial spaces, adding some units, and that became a big element of, at the time, was a concern about how do we make that entry, you know, kind of stand out more? And he's done quite a bit of work on that with the tiling work and the edges around that. And the idea was to, you know, bring that, create that as a big entry to it. And we have, I think, in your packet, there should be two schemes. There should be a Scheme A and a Scheme B, which would be sheets eight and nine. And this is, I believe, would be Scheme, this is Scheme A on page eight. So there's two, you have sheets that have these, basically these sheets here that have the four perspectives and stuff on it. And so this one is looking, looking east on the Scheme A. And what I would like to, there's still concern. I think, you know, we've worked really well, I think, with the staff, and I think there's, it gets down to subjective things of colors. And so there's still some concern that we feel that with the colors that, for senior residents, that we're still kind of adding probably too much color in here for it. And so if you look at Scheme B, where we're kind of minimizing the color on the Broadway side, we're still trying to balance off the two ends. On the right-hand end, we have the two-story, or the three levels where we have two-story or two-bedroom apartments and one-bedroom apartments. And then we're adding on to the left side, we're kind of bringing some of that color back into the existence, into the existing on it. And so while we agree with really all the conditions of approval, this is the one part that we would like to try to put forward to be able to have you really think about maybe minimizing the, the palette that we have. Thinking about the, you know, the fact that it is a senior residence, that there are already other buildings that are just the sand color that are there, that it is quite an expense, along with all the other conditions that we're doing, to have to paint the whole front of that building. And so we're asking, that's why we had the two proposals in there, was to be able to kind of get your opinions and hopefully your support on going into the item or the option B, if possible. So with that, we have all the other conditions of approval. I think we agree with the, we're putting streetlights on Plaza. We're doing all the upgrades onto Broadway as far as the landscape goes. We're doing new signage, and of course, then the whole facility. There also, the, we have been required to put in a large fire access road into the center, which is, we've really worked with to try to make it look like it's all landscaped and doing that, and that's also quite a large expense as well. So I want to thank you for listening to me, and if there are any questions of me in particular.
Commissioners, questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir. No.
Sure.
See no written communications. Do we have any public comment on this project? Seeing none. Do you have a closing statement, or was that good enough?
Um, I'm just.
To the microphone, thank you.
No, just the closing, the closing statement would be is just that, you know, we would like to push to have Option B used as the colors and all the other conditions of approval we agreed to.
Thank you, sir.
So you think you'd like Option B?
Yes.
Option B, yeah. And with that, the other thing we would like is to work with staff on maybe minimizing a little bit of the color on the Plaza. Right now, I think we have four building colors there. And if, you know, I think that the sand, because the rest of the project is that, is certainly a given, and then possibly more of the terracotta and the lighter gray for the building color, still using the accurate gray of the accent color. Okay?
Thank you. This time, I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Comments?
Mr. Chair, I have a, I have a question for staff. Is this an age-restricted senior residence, 55 and over?
Uh, yes, and I'll have the applicant clarify on that.
Oh.
It's okay if you want to answer. Hi. My name's Jeff Herman, and yes, the answer is that it is 55 and over. That is essentially the only restriction. If you have any questions for me, I'm.
I think we're good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, regarding the, the facade colors, I kind of, I kind of like A, Option A, just because it makes it a little bit more.
What's happening here? Excuse me, sir?
Yes, my name's Patrick Donovan.
Public comment period was a few minutes ago.
Pardon?
I called for public comment period a few minutes ago.
Could not hear you.
Okay. I will go ahead. Are, are you associated with these people?
I'm a resident of the, the building.
So you're here to speak about the project?
Yes.
Okay, you have three minutes.
Thank you. As I said, I'm a resident of Vandenberg Senior Citizen, which is an affordable housing for seniors, many who are disabled, who are being displaced by this project. I would just like the commissioners to think about what this will cost to affordable housing, because I see no affordable housing being added in these 53 units. And our rent has gone up twice just within the last year, and how often is that going to keep going on until we are put out of business or we're out of a home to live in? So I just want, like, you guys to at least think about that in the process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I'll close the public comment period again and bring it back to the commission. Discussion?
No.
Comments? Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I was just going to mention that I did like Option A a little bit better than Option B. It's more interesting as you get south of, south of Stoll, all the colors are almost that same sand color. I mean, you got the In Shape, I don't know what's that, the Plaza, what's that Plaza called? It's almost the same color.
Gotcha.
Across the street, it's the same color. So I think that would be a little bit more interesting as you're heading down Broadway to look at.
Thank you. Mr. Dickerson?
I, I, I agree with Commissioner Lopez. I, I think that Option B is just bland, and I know that it's less bland than what's currently there, but if we have an Option A versus an Option B, I, I prefer Option A as well. I think it's just a, a nicer facade for the, for what is a very large building and takes up a whole block. So anyway, that's, that's my preference.
Is that it? Thank you. Commissioner Hernandez?
I think this is a good project. I would go with Option A, and I do take into consideration what the public comment speaker stated regarding rent. It is getting very expensive, but I do know that housing 55 and over is very needed as well. And we do have the letter from Section A or Housing Authority, you know, supporting the project. So I think it is a good project. I think we just need to be mindful of the people that are living there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I, I'm not in love with either of the elevations as far as the colors. Neither one of them do anything for me. So, yeah, it's up to you guys. I, I'm, I don't like A. I think that we have the new Pennies, and it's got the tile, and it's got the new stuff across the street, and we do, we do have the plain sand on the other side of the street. We got the Starbucks over there, we got, but the, but the Penny's Shopping Center, they've really done an upgrade. And to throw this colorful thing across the street, to me, is a little too much as far as A. And then I've got to look at B, and I've got to look at Commissioner Dickerson and say, "Yeah, that, that's not much better." And for me, I would like to see another color scheme, because neither one of these do it for me. As far as the project, I'm very happy to see more senior housing. This is the first I've heard of the situation with the rising rents. I'm not sure what we, as a commission, can do about that, but certainly thank you for making us aware of that. As far as the other elements of the project, I think it's, it's beautiful, it's needed, and it is recommended through the Housing Authority. I'm, I don't like either of the elevations. That's my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion.
Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve Vandenberg Senior Residence Plan Development Permit at 1314 South Broadway, PD 2017-0002, with Option A.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will abstain. Motion carries? Correct?
Yep, you have three.
There you go.
You guys are good to go?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, we're going to move to other business, number nine, oil reports from planning commission and staff. Do we have any from the planning commission? Do we have anything from staff?
Tomorrow, we have a study session.
Hang on, excuse me, Ryan?
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Lopez.
I'm sorry.
I, I just wanted to see if we can get a status on the off-ramp, southbound off-ramp at.
Oh, good question. Oh, good question.
Betarravia, because I know we talked about the two left turn pockets and the one right turn pocket, and then it was going to go to two right turn. I just, I heard about it over the weekend from somebody that's very interested, from the dangerous positioning on the freeway. Any update on that?
Commissioner Seifert, excuse me, Chairman Seifert, Commissioner Lopez, we recently, I did by chance, it was in my inbox, was a congressional grant from the state of California for testing. So we're getting close. I believe the plans have been completed, and I think that after this, testing with the congressional grant that we received from Caltrans, then we'll be on to the next step to call for bids for the project. So we're very close. So I'm hopeful that before the end of summer, we'll be calling for bids, and this will be in construction in the fall.
Thank you.
Long as we've got you on the hot seat and your mic's on, I've got one for you. The 25 mile an hour speed limit sign at Thompson and McCoy. I requested something to be done. I didn't want any action to the owners of the businesses, but I did just want to do something to try to slow traffic down there. And you said there was restraints or studies or, but it is a 25 zone, I think, or it might be 35, but it, are we going to do anything with that? Now, FedEx has moved out. It's not quite as busy as it was, but I'm assuming someone will move in.
We're concerned about the parking, too.
I did bring it up, yeah. It was a line of sight item. We were, maybe just make it acceptable, because everyone parks there. I mean, have we thought about that at all?
So Chairman Seifert, we, I did contact the PD, and I did express your concerns with the concerns of the Planning Commission regarding speed limits or speed in general in that area. And PD had, they stated that they would step up enforcement as well as just keeping an eye on the restricted parking in the area. The establishment of the no-stopping zones in that general area are because of site distance issues. Now, for speed limits, a speed survey, which we have a current one, which is established, however, given the geometry of the roadway, there's certain factors that can be taken into consideration as far as reevaluating the speed in that general area. So what, and I haven't yet, but we will, we're in the process of hiring another engineer, but just to let you know, we'll be looking at evaluating, doing speed survey studies to fine-tune the speed limit in that general area. It's...
Okay, and I'm not sure, Dave, I don't remember if it is actually 25 or 35. I'm sorry, I'm having a senior moment. But if we were just to place a speed limit sign on Thompson, is it Thompson, your street? Thompson and McCoy?
On that corner there?
Yeah, there's a perfect light standard, just slap a sign on there, people come around that corner, they see it, they slow down. That's really, I mean, studies and people and drive-bys and, if we just buy a sign and put it up, that's all I'm asking for.
Well, it's...
At Home Depot after tonight, we'll just do it ourselves.
I know it's Simpleton, but, I mean, it would be very effective. I drive there all the time, and if I was looking at that sign, I would look at my speed limit.
Well, Chairman Seifert, signs can be placed, however, they need to be backed by a valid engineering survey. And if a sign is just placed there, then it becomes invalid, and the police have not, will not be able to cite. The City Council can and has the authority to establish...
I mean, even at the same speed limit.
Pardon?
I'm not even saying lower the speed limit, just a sign stating what the speed limit is.
Oh, a radar feedback sign.
Just a sign that says, and then people will come around that corner, they'll look at the sign, they'll look at their thing, they'll slow down, they'll come around that curve, and when they go to run down, the people go into Moxie Cafe, they'll slow down.
Yeah, because I don't think there is a speed limit sign, there certainly isn't a speed limit sign between Blosser and McCoy.
There is. It's yellow, and it's not a regular speed, it's like, it's like an extra speed limit sign to kind of get your attention, but you don't see it, and that's my point.
So we'll take a look and see what we can do as far as adding radar feedback signage there?
Simple, easy, and it might save us, the city, a ton of money if there's an accident there. Just a thought. Thank you very much. Got you on the hot seat. Appreciate it.
I have, I have a quick thing, and I don't mean to prolong the session, but if I could just rile the chair up just a tad more, what's the status on your dead tree?
That dead, oh, that dead tree? No, no, no.
But you got excited.
No, no, we, I wish the, what's the guy, Gary?
Scott.
Scott! Oh, my gosh. Not only did they cut the tree down, somebody came and stole it.
Nice.
So it was just laying on the side of the road and forever, and then somebody said, I need some firewood, and they came and they cut it, and then we did ask, I asked, requested that they mowed the lot, and they did a fairly good job. The only thing now is trash pickup along the street would make it a lot better, but I don't believe that's a city thing. I think that's if I want the trash picked up, I go get a trash bag and go pick it up.
Just so I care, so do you now have enough wood for this winter's fireplace?
I'm not at liberty to say.
I see. Okay, got it.
It was a pine, just, by the way. How funny. It looks much better. It really does. It just, it looks much better, so thank you. And thanks, Scott, very much. He did work with the county, and apparently some of that is city property, so. Anything else? I think we're adjourned.
We do have a study session tomorrow. I just wanted to remind, it's okay.
Dang it, sorry.
Just to remind the public and the commission, we have a study session tomorrow. We have two items on the agenda.
Can I excuse you a second? Nancy, I was not able to make the meeting, but congratulations, and thank you so much for everything you've done for the city. It shows. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, Ryan, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
It's okay. Two items on study session tomorrow, one, the Quickie Car Wash, which is a proposed car wash on Betarravia, and then Cox Bungalows, which is a Joe Halsell senior housing project. Let's see, where is it located? We don't have an address on here. Blosser, oh, well, that's easy. Cox and Blosser. Thank you. Thank you. So two items on tomorrow's study session. That's all.